Thank you. So this time I'd like to go ahead and call a regular scheduled November sixteenth planning commission meeting in order. Uh, please join me in standing for the black.
United States of America and the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Go ahead and do a roll call, please.
Okay. Um Chairman Kane.
Here.
Commissioner Layton.
Here.
Commissioner Jimenez. Here. Commissioner Canine.
Here.
Commissioner Parisi. Commissioner Irons.
Here.
Commissioner Salata.
All right, thanks. Let the record show that we do have a core with two absent. And we'll move right into, everybody get a chance to read the minute from October nineteenth. Any comments or that's if not, we can entertain a little bit. Make a motion, we approve the minutes from November sixteen. We had a motion to approve the minute from October nineteen.
October nineteen, sorry.
We have a second?
I'll second.
Alright, so we have a motion by Commissioner Irons as a second, Commissioner Layton, to approve the October nineteenth minutes. All of the favors say aye.
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 All those post-sent sign, uh, motion carries. So I guess we move right down to the discussion items and the planning commission or planning official.
Um. Last time I think Jackie mentioned that we were, I don't know, some, I'm a fan of the whole number for under-reserving permits approved and I sat and in the last three days and approved about fifteen more and the last, the highest number that I think I saw was a hundred and six. Or a hundred and ten. Well, two hundred and ten, okay, that means there's more coming or I missed one or something, didn't capture the number. Um, that doesn't include other things. I mean, we've started a, a, a number tracking system that pulled some things out from that tracking, so there uh, we're on the fourth variance. Um, we've done um, two amendments, we've done some land petitions and re-plots and a couple of other things, so number of actions processed this year, probably up well over a hundred and twenty. And uh, most of that I think is, I mean, it's just, it we had a little, we had like a, when, when the, when the whole market thing got really squishy here a month and a half ago, whenever that was, but it felt like we had a little too weak, kind of like a breather, but it's just right back at it. We're continuing to still be busy, so um. We have had a big planning official and a senior planner position posted for several months now and have not had uh, any real traction with it. Um, so we're we keep working at that and see what happens. Um. I committed to six to nine months, not two years, as some people keep wanting to say. Um. So actually nine months was, what is today? Nine months and yesterday. Um, which means yesterday wasn't very exciting, a passing anniversary. It's just, it's, it's for me, it's a bad thing. I mean, cause it's in my head. Um, but uh. Anyway, we'll, we're gonna work on how this transition happens and we're gonna find a way to keep things moving here and not have the wheels fall off the bus, so to say. So um, having answering the question about what's going on, um, currently kind of things that are in process is we have a land petition that's come in, um. Uh, and it's, it's just two partial to three partial, so it's a type two decision. It'll, it'll be done with notice, no public hearing, so it will come before you. Um, anticipating another application sometime in the next little bit. Um, there'll be another land petition again, same situation where it's required to know the city enjoying property owners and to agencies, but it doesn't require public hearing. We have another variance for another house that hasn't been able to figure out how to meet its setback requirements that came in yesterday. Um. I'm struggling with what to do with that. And it, without a point where at least it's within the parameters where it can be approved administratively. But that's still, it's, it's still frustrating because I, somebody can't measure, you know, why not put it twenty and a half feet back? So when you mess up by five inches, you're still within your twenty feet setback. I, you know, we'll, we're gonna continue to work with the, with the builders to figure, to figure that problem out. Um. Lots of other fun stuff happening. Um. We've met with a lot of developers over the last six, eight months uh, about other properties in and around Boardman. Um. On the other side of Main Street, um, the Mon property may actually be in play uh, with some potential opportunity for that to develop and to mixed commercial um, multifamily kind of opportunity. We've deemed an application for um, met mobile home park incomplete. Um, because the, the applicant um, was trying to hold their hand and, but I finally said, look, you, you have to submit the required materials before they can review this. So once that application becomes complete, that will require a public hearing in front of you all, but that's probably a couple of months before we get there. Um. And that's down near um. Bella Vista next to Dr. Wood, there's a five acre, five or six acre piece there that's zoned for multifamily and has recently sold. Um, I just probably some other funny things out there happening, but those are the ones that are at the top of my head tonight, so. Yeah, I think that's. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Questions for Carla?
Yeah. I, well, but before you move on, there's actually one thing that I'm gonna, I'm incorporated in that, I should have thought of this. So um, I did receive an email from Carla a while back. Um, indicating that she was not interested in having, in renewing her commitment to us, so we can all beat up on her now.
You don't have to accept it.
Well.
Yes.
I should think R S four four or something, I don't know. But I, what I wanted to do is share that I, I, you know, there's just, there's so much going and I'm still, there are still some instances where I'm still kind of just uh, trying to get my feet under me and figure things out, but I, I was able to pull this up. Um. There are three terms that expire at the end of this year. Um, that would be Carlos, Jennifers, and Jacobs. So I will, I will do my best to remember to send you two emails just to ask you if you want to be renewed, unless you know now and just want to tell me if you would like to have, you know, if you'd like to request that you be reappointed. Um, because we're gonna be going out and recruiting for one of the positions for sure. We'll probably just recruit generally for the planning commission. Um. And if fourteen people apply, then there might be some competition, but um. Anyway, and at the same time, if you know anybody that you think would be a good planning commissioner, please encourage them to apply. Uh, and I'll just share um, for Carla's benefit that when I was the county planning director, nobody could resign unless they count. It's. I, I, yeah, so those are, those are kind of my rules. So, you know, I don't care if your sister, your brother, your aunt, your, you know, your child is old enough. Oh. Anyway, that, that's kind of where we're at. So the three that would um, the terms would need to be renewed at the end of this year are again Carla, Jennifer, and Jacob, so. Think on that. Um, and we'll correspond and in the meantime, I'll work with Karen to get that. Um, to let the council know that they're gonna need to be finding at least one, one, if not more, and that we're gonna need to recruit accordingly for those, so. Yeah, I don't, I don't care anyone wants to.
We don't, we don't wanna find more, so sorry to see Carla go.
Yeah.
But yeah, truly, I hope you and the two will stay on.
Yeah. I think I'm coming up on tenure pretty soon.
You're up to what?
Almost ten years, I think.
Is it great? I think uh.
I guess over the ten years.
Was here, was on twenty, yeah, twenty, yeah.
Yeah, you got a base.
And you took, you took her place, so you used that long.
I think her last ten years has been kind of rarely have full condition, too. I mean.
Yes, yeah.
You know, with five, six.
Yeah.
Oh, alright, so. Yeah, hopefully.
Yeah, cause last meeting, when everybody was here, that was just stupid.
Yeah.
Okay. Ready to move on to the second one?
Okay, moving on to a review process of public hearing.
So, a couple of things came up, um, and I should have printed that one email and brought it with me, but um, I just wanted to kind of just review two things. The whole issues around planning commission and who you are and what you do is actually in the city charter. Um, or it's on the charter, it's in the municipal code. Um, and so I shared that with you so you could see, see that. Um, it talks about the members. And it sets the terms and of course, obviously, we're not in two thousand and four, five, or six anymore, but it's continued to revolve around that. Um, office for three years commencing on January first. Um. We're supposed to have, it's identified here as a, as a president and a vice president, we effectively call you chair and vice chair, and so this would be something that I would flag for, you either need to change the process here, or we need to change the minutes of the vote at some point in time, so it's probably a change to municipal code um, as we kind of work through that. Um, it also says um, the commission's first meeting shall elect a president and vice president who shall be members appointed by the mayor and who shall hold the office during the pleasure of the commission. So this leads me to believe that the mayor is appointing the positions, and is that a mayor task or is that a council task?
I think I don't, I don't know, but what I think is that we just brought forward some names and they approved them.
Right.
That they were happy that we could.
Fine, cool, just, right. So again, something to clarify between maybe the, the, the charter language and then, and then the code language on that. Um. It also says it's just the bulk of the life and secretary, but the city kind of create, creates that through the recorder position. So I, I'm not aware that you've elected one in the past and the secretarial duties are done by staff, so again um, I suppose you can elect Jackie or elect the, the, the acting clerk or recorder to do that work, but again, just something that I you know, I kind of read through these and thought, oh, there's a couple of things that we need to flag relative to, you know, when, when there's capacity and time to update these requirements. So that's what we actually do. It does talk about a quorum. It also says it shall meet at least once a month at such kinds of places, it may be fixed by the commission. Um, but when there's no, when there's no business, I know historically you're canceled meetings, we will continue to cancel meetings if there's no business. So we probably want to look at that too, um, so that we're holding meetings when there's business to conduct. I mean. Yeah. I, I kind of wanna ask you to come here, cause you, you know, if there's truly nothing to do, I don't wanna ask you to come. Um. It, it does say members can be removed uh, from misconduct or non-performance. Um, actually, um. There probably should be an attendance requirement here, so that when people just decide they're not gonna attend, I mean, excuse the absences are one thing, absence is just for the fact of being, you know, I'm not bothering, I think that is something that should be um identified and after so many unexcused absences that the person be asked if they wanna continue.
You know, I think elsewhere, um, in the charter, it may mention that um, that the mayor, after so many unexcused absences, can remove somebody from a committee.
Okay.
In a different section of a, of the charter, I think.
Okay, I'll look there.
Yeah.
And then.
Any committee the city has.
Okay, yeah. Um, and then this, this membership restriction is the place where um, not fewer than six of the commissioners shall reside within the city limits. And then it says no more than two voting members shall be engaged in buying, selling, or developing real estate. Um. And then it said that no two voting members shall be engaged in the same kind of business trade profession or occupation, so there's the limits there on who can be appointed. Um, well, it says that no fewer shall reside within the city of limits. It doesn't really dis, the, 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 um. Definitively declare that one voting member can be from the, is it just outside of the city limits historically, or has it been within the urban growth boundary, or?
It's outside of the.
Outside of the city limits.
Outside of mine.
An interesting, um, there's a there's a list or that a lot of planners belong to, it's hosted by the University of Oregon, it's called the Oregon Planner Network, otherwise known as O P N. And there was just recently a thread about councils, um, or planning commissions having member, a member or two that are from outside of the, the jurisdictional boundary. And, and who could that be and how does that work? It was an interesting thread to, to kind of read through, to see how some jurisdictions have embraced it and others have kind of said, mm, no, I'm not sure we like that, and then if there is somebody, are there qualifications that should be attached to that? Um. Employment of staff. Talks about that, that's what powers the commission. Um. Says that all your recommendations should be in writing. And that you have some restrictions on expenditures. So you don't, you only have a certain amount of, of authority there. So anyway, that's what the, that's what the current municipal code says, and I, I don't think a lot, there's nothing in here, it's supposed to be governs your, your public hearing process. But when I was looking for things, I thought, well, might be work, you know, just making sure we're kind of on the same page and, and beginning to identify maybe, again, it goes back into that list of, these are the things that we know we need to work on over the next I don't know, three years.
Well, have any of you seen this before?
No.
Okay, so.
I've read it once upon a time, but.
Was Sam's thing, he was giving it when he got.
Yeah.
Jennifer didn't.
I don't remember seeing.
Very, very good, yeah.
Did he? Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. So the, the next piece that I sent, including the packet, um, is out of the actual development code, and so in the pages, I'm gonna start at the bottom of that first page, um, down where it says conduct of a public hearing, so um. I just took these pages directly, I didn't do anything else with them. So it really does talk through how the hearing should happen, what what you're doing. And um. Jake, I know that you really enjoy this real short and simple thing, but there are some deficiencies in this. And we do need to make some changes to it. I think if we go through this, you'll see that and maybe I know you like this one, maybe we work together, figure out how we make some changes to it.
I, I don't think I like that in particular. I just like a set of bumpers either way, right?
Right.
So.
Right.
I know the county does one as well, and it's one more than that, they've got a.
They've got like a three-page statement, I, I'm exaggerating three pages, but it's, it's a lengthy statement. You can be almost ten minutes late for the meeting and not miss anything. This planning chair reads the statement at the beginning, so.
Well, what really is nice is what I might, cause they usually have multiple public hearings at night. And they'll do the, they'll do that reading at the beginning of the meeting and not have to do it for every place, hearing, which is.
Well, there are some, there is some case law that says we should actually be doing that statement before ever hearing. Um, and then it should be a different statement for a quasi-judicial hearing than for a legislative hearing. So um, that, I mean, that's, again. Um, just, we don't, we're not gonna make all these changes tomorrow or immediately. Obviously, I've been here nine months and we haven't gotten well done yet, so these are just things we're gonna keep working on as we keep working through the process, but hopefully as you kind of go through this, you'll you, you'll begin to see what some of the things might need to be, um, what we've been doing it more right than wrong, and then a few places where we may need to improve a little bit. Um, so the commencement, it says the hearing's body shall state the following to those in, in attendance. So a couple of things, and this is where we probably need to do something that's a little specific for each of the actions, however. In the staff report, some of this shows up in, in the staff report as well, but the applicable approval criteria on the top of the page, the second page or page four, four, if you look at the page numbers at the bottom. The applicable approval criteria and standards that apply to the application or appeal. I've been incorporating those into the description on the agenda. So if when you are if any of you should find yourself running the meeting, when you can meet A, if you read the um, so like tonight's agenda where it says public hearings are unscheduled, usually there's a short paragraph there, and in that paragraph, we list what the substantive criteria would be for that particular action, cause this could be different. I mean, if all were various land petitions, it'll all be the same criteria, but if we're hearing a variance and then a land petition and then you know, something else, then it will be different, different criteria for each of those. Um, a statement that testimony and evidence shall concern the approval criteria described in the staff report or other criteria companies plan on land use regulations, which a person testifying believes to apply to the decision. So again, this goes back to substantive criteria and, and there are um, different, a couple of different ways we can say that, but we need to say that. We also need to say that a statement, a, a statement that failure to raise an issue with sufficient detail um or specificity give the hearing's body and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue means that no appeal may be made to the state land use board or appeals on that matter. At this level, that's quasi-judicial, um. We could also add into that the city council. Um, and then the last thing is, before the conclusion, the initial evidentiary hearing, any participant may ask the planning commission for opportunity to present additional element relevant evidence or testimony that is within the scope of the hearing. A hearing's body shall grant the request for scheduling a date to finish the hearing, a continuance uh, from paragraph two, which follows. Um, or by leaving the record open for additional written evidence or testimony from paragraph three of this subsection. So those are things we need to incorporate into when we start a hearing, what we need to be saying to the audience in attendance. The next one is basically if you grant a continuance, um. It shall be continued to a date, time, and place, at least seven days after the date of the first evidentiary hearing. And the reason, just so you understand, the reason we want to date, to specify that date specifically, is it preserves our notice. So we've expended funds to send notice to joining landowners and to post it in the paper and do all that other stuff. If we don't say clearly where we're, when and where we're continuing it to, we have to redo that work. So we like to state clearly on the record, it's gonna be continued to our December meeting, which is on this date, at this time, and this location, and then, and then we preserved our notice. Um. If you leave the record open, there's some information here about leaving the record open. Um, again, we probably should clarify this in some kind of procedure statement again to those in attendance. We are under three B, we are compelled to, to process a local application, including local appeals within a hundred and twenty days. Um, if it's a conference of plan amendment or, or if it's a, if it's an amendment that requires a post acknowledgement of plan amendment, that hundred and twenty day per timeline is set aside, but for somebody that comes in and is seeking a variance or um, a partition or conditional use, we have to approve that within a hundred and twenty days. Which those actions are only quasi-judicial, they would only go to the city council in a, in a hearing um, situation, so we, we wanna make sure we're moving through things from a staff perspective as well as the hearing's body. Just something for you to keep in mind as members of the planning commission that um, when, when you're in, when you're in the moment and you're thinking I, I need to get to all the answers I have so we can approve this, and if you think, oh, it'd be easier to continue it, keep in your mind a hundred and twenty days. So you know, if you think you're gonna have questions that you can get to staff before the hearing, that's always helpful, because then we can resolve that in that perfect evidentiary hearing and not find ourselves in a situation where we're continuing. Especially for things that we could have resolved before we got into the hearing situation. Um. There is the whole, I call it the seven, seven, seven. Um, when somebody wants to submit additional testimony to record, particularly if it's the opposition, we give them seven days. We give um or it might be the applicant, then we give the opposite, the opposition, and then we have seven days to kind of finish that off, so we can get to the next hearing with the packet being presented timely and all of that good stuff. Um. So. It does say the review, the, there's a couple of things in here that are, they're just statements in here. It just said the review authority shall retain, cut the other record until the city issues the final decision. Requirements for retaining land use records, we're gonna retain it anyway, we have to retain it for, in some cases, forever. So we'll always be the repository of the record. Then it goes through at, at the appeal here. Um, so participants in the appeal of a type two administrative decision or a type pre-hearing are entitled to an impartial review authority as free from potential conflicts of interest and pre-hearing ex parte contacts as frequently possible. So just a little bit briefly about ex parte contact or conflicts of interest. Conflict of interest are, are really tied to that financial piece, and so all of you fill out your form, you all filled out your form by April, first, or April fifteenth, whatever that date is. And you have to disclose some information. Um, city councils have to disclose a bit more information. But basically, they just are well, they're intruding, but beyond that, um, you know, they, they wanna make sure that you have no um. Visible bias or conflict of interest, so. If it is your brother or sister who's making an application and it's for a business that they're doing and you have no connection to it, I would always encourage you to disclose the relationship. But if you're not a partner in the business, if you're not gonna work in the business, you would not have to recuse yourself from that action. That's somebody could challenge your impartiality. But if you can disclose the relationship and, and, and state on the record that you can review it impartially, then there's no reason for you to stay on the d, uh, on the dais. Conflict of interest, um. Our expect, ex parte contact is a little bit different. Um, if you have contact, that's okay. I would always encourage you that when Joe applicant approaches you on the street and they start asking you questions, that you would say to them, your questions are best answered by the staff. If I'm gonna be the person who's gonna review this, I need to retain my impartiality so that I, I can hear it and give it, give it its just due. Um, sometimes you can't get out of those conversations. Or sometimes you maybe have some level of knowledge that comes just because maybe where you work, or the group of people that you went to dinner with last weekend, or whatever it may be. And so if the conversation happened and it wasn't, you didn't have an opportunity to extract yourself from it, or, or just found yourself in that situation, disclose it. Because it's harder to fix that after the fact than in the moment, so. Hey, I was, you know, at the coffee shop the other day and Joe applicant came up and we had a conversation and we ended up talking about this. I stopped the conversation as quickly as I could, um, and encouraged him to just work with staff and make his application. But he shared these facts with me, and I did not, you know, if they're in that application, if you've seen them in the application and you guys wish me to say, there's no, I don't know anything more than what's reflected in the staff report and the attachments to it. But if you learn something that's not there, then you need to disclose that. You need to say, oh, but, but by the way, I learned this and I did not see that reflected in here. Because you have knowledge that your co-commissioners don't have, and you want them to have the same information you have. Because it challenged, that could be, that could be the problem. If you ever do find yourself in a situation where you recuse yourself, I don't know what past practice it's been. Um, my recommendation is to leave the dais. You join the audience until the action is completed and then you come back up. Um. We can certainly talk that through, but um, I just think from a perspect, perception, um, for them, their perception is their reality. And um, we wanna make sure that what they're proceeding is above board and without question and all that good stuff. Um, so in an appeal process, though, it kind of went off a little bit here because it talks about ex parte contacting here. Um. It, there is a statement in here that says a member of the hearing's body shall not participate in a proceeding which they are any of the following has a direct or substantial financial interest, and they do call it out specifically as a financial interest, and they have a list of people. Um. Any actual potential interest shall be disclosed. Any actual potential interest shall be disclosed at the hearing when the action is being taken. And I would, I would always, I would ask that if you, if you know you're going to need to recuse yourself or make a statement of this. Let us know beforehand, even if it's when you first come in for the hearing start to, you know, pull staff number behind aside and say. Hey, I'm going to recuse myself from third hearing because of this reason. Call earlier, email earlier. It's always nice to know so we can prepare for that, particularly when a situation we might not have forum. You should note D, though, it says if all members abstain or are disqualified, those members present who declare their reasons for extension or disqualification. Shall be requalified to make a decision. So you know, I don't know what the action would be, but you know, if y'all have an interest in it, we we still need to make a decision. So you're going to have to figure out how to be become impartial or they're going to have to figure out how to allow you to take action on it. But the last item there, any member of the public may raise conflict of interest issues prior to or during the hearing to which the member of the hearing's body shall apply an accordance with this section. So if they think you have a conflict of interest, you, we do need to respond to that. There's a little bit more detail in there about ex parte contact, um, things you can do and can do, shouldn't do. So then moves into presenting and receiving evidence. So. Logistically. You open the meeting, you approve the minutes, we do the roll call, you know, we go through the steps and then we get to the public hearings. So the beginning of each public hearing, we should be making that opening statement. Um, having that hearing, closing that hearing, deliberating, coming to a conclusion and then starting the next hearing if there's more than one on the agenda. And again, opening that public hearing, making that statement. Making sure that we're identifying the criteria for that hearing, which may be different than the previous hearing. And then going through that process again. The staff report is a part of the record, the application that you may not see is a part of the record. And then, and it's not that it's not available to you, we just don't attach the. Because usually what's in the staff report is reflective of what is in the application when we have the exhibits. Defining map, site plan, you know, whatever else may be, may have been submitted. So. Just definitions for this, um. This whole thing is a public meeting. You know, from when Jacob gavels it open to the point when we gavel it closed, it's a public meeting. The public hearing happens inside of that. And when you open the public hearing, you open the public hearing and then you call for evidence and testimony. And then you close the period of time for evidence and testimony and you move to deliberation. And then you conclude the hearing, the public hearing by a decision. And so we, I think we just want to get some clarity on what what we're in. So tonight, we're not having any public hearings, so but the whole thing is a public meeting. You move into a public hearing, you're kind of in a. A deeper part of that, there's more. There's more requirements within the public hearing about what you do and how you do it and when you do it. You can set reasonable time limits for oral presentations and you may limit or exclude humans and repetitions erupt. If we had forty nine people in here. And they were all here to oppose it or maybe all here to support the action. The chair has the discretion to say, look, how are, we've heard from five of you. How many more of you are going to get up and say the same thing? At that point, you kind of even ask for showing their hands. And we can capture that in the record and move on. You don't. We're not, we're not disallowing their contribution. But if every one of them comes up and talks for five minutes and there's forty nine of them, we're going to be here until midnight. So we can manage time reasonably by doing those types of things. Um, and whether it's in favor of or in opposition to, you can, you can do the same thing to kind of capture that. And and you can also, when the next person comes up to testify, you can say. If you have something new to add, please do that. If you're just simply repeating what has already been said, we would ask that you just. Indicate that briefly and move on to any testimony. So it's another mechanism to kind of control what's happening. It does say that no oral testimony shall be accepted after the close of the public hearing. Written testimony may be received after the close of the public hearing, only as provided in section D. So, um. The numbers in this might be wrong. Um, section D, I'm not sure what they're referring to. I have to go back and figure this out, but it's, we talked about it earlier. About how the hearing is. And no, it is section D. Okay, content of the public hearing. So it's that section earlier that talks about. When you can accept other testimony. So that's where you might continue, you might leave the record open to allow testimony, written testimony to be submitted. But once you close the record to oral testimony, your record is closed to oral testimony. Um, and you can choose to close it to written testimony at the same time unless somebody has asked it to be left open. And it used to be you could have a discretion about leaving it open or not, and if that's less. Less the case now, if somebody asks for the record to be left open. We need to comply with that.
Do you state whether you. Close the oral and leave the written open?
Yeah, you should. It you should be, it should be, it should be the the act of the chair to be really clear in what they've done. And again, if you're closing the the public hearing, if you're just simply closing it because nobody's asked for it to be left open. I think the assumption can be that it's being closed to oral and written. If you're leaving it open for written testimony, then the action by the chair would be clear that we're closing it to oral testimony. And here's the schedule for the written testimony. I think C is an interesting one, and this kind of in some respects goes back to, I would say this goes back to ex parte contact. Um, you can, this is the property, you can go to a strange area, you may use the information obtained during the visit to support their decision. If the information relied upon is to disclose the hearing and opportunities provided to view the evidence. So feel free to drive by, but then disclose that. And now you're going to say, but I live near it. Do I have to disclose that too? You don't have to disclose that you live near it, but you should disclose that you've been by the property. In the county, oftentimes there were many of the planning commission members, you know, half of them live in south end of the county, half of them live in the north end of the county. Never been by that property. I mean, they didn't know where it was. Um, this is different. You guys live in a much more confined population and you probably live in most of the streets in town. And so you probably know local properties or what's happening. At the general course of information, you don't have to say, I drive by that all the time. But when you receive a packet and you go, oh, that's just down the street. And the next day you slow down and you take a look at it and you observe it. You should probably disclose that because in your observing, did you see something that you should share with the other people who are sitting on the dais? So you. You probably should. So again, it just talks, it just gives a detail there about about what you're about what you're doing there. So the the last piece I'm going to touch on here is, because it's here, I I really wanted to focus on conduct of the public hearing. But I'm going to, I'm going to throw in for good order the decision process as well. Because we are, we're, once, once you guys finish what you're doing. And and I I want to focus kind of on one and two and some three. Under the decision process, so. Basis for a decision, approval or denial of an appeal or a type two administrative decision or a type three application, so a quasi judicial hearing, you have a final say. It shall be based on standards and criteria in the development code. That's what's shown up now in the staff report. When you see those staff reports, I've tried to identify all the applicable criteria. I'm going to try to give you a response to each of those. Those standards and materials relate approval or denial of discretionary development permit applications to the development regulations that were appropriate to the comprehensive plan for the area which the development would occur. And to develop regulations and comprehensive plans from state in the whole. So, um. One of the things I'd like to work towards. And in doing that, I will try to work to. Start developing like some sample motions for you. But when you make a motion to approve. The motion to approve should say, based on the evidence in the record. Based on the findings in the staff report, you should, something. Something should be triggering why you're approving that. So, um. Let's flip that now and let's say staff recommended approval. But you had four people show up and provide compelling evidence. That you're going to go. I don't know, maybe we should deny this one. If you come to that conclusion. Then you need to make sure staff know what your reasons are. Because when we get down here to the findings and conclusions. Staff are going to have to put your reasons for denial. Into staff report and amend that staff report. So that it reflects your decisions to deny, particularly if we came in here with a recommendation to approve. So I don't know what those compelling people might have told you, but. Whatever it is, when you're thinking about how I formed this motion and you've been taking notes through the course of the meeting. Kind of pull those into two or three sentences that summarize. And then refer them back to the substantive criteria, because again. If it's not addressing the substantive criteria, you probably shouldn't be leaning towards denying. But if they address something that's in the substantive criteria that. We weren't aware of or they brought forward. Then take that information and say, hey, the third criteria that says they have to. I I can maybe give an example here, but. Wherever it might be, they they pulled it forward and they convinced you that for these reasons against this substantive criteria now. Go back to the beginning, when they, when the hearing gets open, the chair is going to say. You, your testimony has to be the substantive criteria. They can't stand out here and say, we don't like it, you shouldn't approve it. Them not liking it is not a basis for approval. Them having a concern with an impact from that development. Would be a potential reason to deny it. Am I making sense? Okay. But the key here is that if. What whether you agree, so if you're agreeing with the recommendation from staff. Then your motion should be based on the staff report and the evidence and testimony and the record I moved to approve. If you're amending the decision and maybe you're only modifying the decision, maybe through the course of things, it was like. We're we're really not opposed to this, but we're really concerned about. Um, how they're going to manage, uh. Impacts, uh, I don't know, but I I I'm thinking back, I'm thinking back to when CCS came forward with the youth facility center. I wasn't here, I don't know what came out, maybe they were not concerned. I know they came in front of you for offense variance. And and maybe the concern was the type of fence they were going to build. So maybe you're willing to approve it. But you want to modify it, you want to add a new condition of approval to the decision. So in that case, I'm moving to approve. Based on the staff report and the evidence and testimony, however, I want to modify the decision to include a condition of approval to address. The concern that was raised by. Somebody in the audience. Am I making sense? Yeah, because now you're giving, you're giving me the basis and me or whoever staff is to go in and amend the staff report. Before the chair signs it. The planning commission shall issue a final written order containing the findings and conclusions stated in subsection two, which either approves denies or approves specific conditions. You may also issue appropriate intermediate rulings when more than one committed decisions required. So. I've recently instituted Jacob signing the findings. Um, I I'm not sure that's been accidentally done in the past, and yet it's clearly a requirement that you issue. Final written. Um, findings and conclusions, and my interpretation of that is that they are. Signed. At the at the conclusion, so.
Kind of process before was. If it was a big decision, he had his own. The staff, I mean, uh. The document, and I don't remember what the guy had with it, but I I had signed. Doc, it was previously.
Okay.
Um, I saw it, it wasn't.
It wasn't all of them, or was it? Okay. It's going to be all of them. So, um. And again, I'm just going to come back here, then decision-making time on this, what, once that, once you guys conclude. The code here says that we have ten business days after the close of the deliberation. Um, to do that final order and in that case, for me, it's that the staff report needs to be signed. Um, and then I think this next one is going to say five days, but I'm not seeing that there. Um, decision during. On the day after the, oh, that's effective date for the appeal period. Um, we, once the staff report has been concluded, amended as amended if needed and then signed by the chair. We then send out what's called a notice of decision. So basically a letter to the applicant and anybody else who's requested. Um, notice that we've come to a conclusion. Um, we send it. My history in doing this has always been, we do the notice, the notice of decision, which is an approval letter. And we then um, attach to that, include in that any conditions. And then attach to it the actual copy of the actual signed findings, including any attachments to that. Yeah. So when records get really big, that gets rather convoluted. Small records are good. Um, and then finally, this is an effective date. The code actually says. Um, that the decision is effective on the day after the appeal period expires. So for your decisions, that appeal period is currently, I think, fourteen days. So if somebody doesn't appeal your decision to the city council within that timeframe, then the appeal appeal period is over and the decision is final and effective. Um, questions? Any thoughts?
Well, what we. Which I we we've done previously, so.
Okay, yeah. Some questions come up, so I just wanted to, you know. So fill in any blanks that.
Definitely important to have, you know, a script. For whoever the chair is, to find, to make this as easy as possible.
Yeah.
And then, uh. And then. See what's going on there.
Yeah, yeah, um. Just on the meeting minutes piece, um, because last time, I think the last meeting, right, that recused herself from approving the minute because she hadn't been there. Um, that's actually not required. Um, she can act, um, if next month, Zach and. Uh, who else isn't here tonight? Ethan, Ethan. Yes, if Zach and Ethan, um. Are here and we need their vote for a quorum, approve the minutes. Uh, they can approve the minutes. Um, you're not approving that you were there or weren't there. You're approving that you think that the minutes adequately captured what happened. And that, um. They're watching of the business that took place and. Uh, you can do that as a member of this body, whether you were in attendance at that meeting or not. Um, you can do that by asking questions of either the person who. You know, staff who were here, the person who took the minutes, um, others who may have been in attendance if you're not sure or uncertain. Um, to clarify clarify something, but you know, your role is to, um. Just confirm that they're in adequate order, um, represent the actions that took place. And so on and so forth, um. The city doesn't require verbatim minutes. Um, some jurisdictions do. Um, some jurisdictions that have been written minutes, they keep the audio recording forever and ever. Um, more than does written minutes. Um, once they're done. Um, you can, in the old days, we would throw the exit tapes away. Now we can post a, the website, it can be there forever and ever. It held us so much faith that we have to believe the really old ones, but, um. Yeah, so yeah, you know, uh, you you're available to take action. In the same vein, if for some reason you you did miss a hearing and a hearing is continued and you missed the first part. And now you're at the second part. We do make available for you the draft minutes. Um, we can talk, staff can talk to you about what happened. Again, the videos will be, in in this environment, the videos we posted the website, you go watch, they could watch it. And in that case, you wouldn't have to maybe watch the whole thing, you could target it and just watch the hearing and question. So there's a lot of ways to kind of bring yourself up to date where something is happening. So there's a lot of ways to kind of bring yourself up to date where something is happening. So yeah. Any other questions or thoughts? If not, we can go to the next one. Okay. So I I didn't add anything more to this binder. Um, what I have noticed though is that the binder is about, you might have to swap out your binders to give you a bigger one. Yeah, oh, I wanted to.
I keep all.
Maybe I do whatever I didn't mean with.
You've got catching up to do.
My task is very fast, you could do it, I'm a few. The office or file.
Okay, I probably know those things, so in your binder should be. Uh, the first thing that we handed out, I think what we handed the binder first out, there are four, three or four things in there. So the first document is an intro introductory guideline used planned for small cities and counties in Oregon. This was produced by the permanent conservation development back in two thousand and seven. They've never really updated it, um, but it's a good document. Um, it. In fact, it's probably one that um. You know, maybe in January, we should actually say, let's walk through this in a little more detail, uh, you know, sign is. Um. I don't wanna, you know, we're just gonna spend too much time, so. But what I would say is that if you're new, or if you're like, I'm still not understanding something. This really does, like, chapter, I just flipped it from your chat, I guess, which chapter was that I just saw it? Chapter eleven is types of public hearings, and there it is, it takes you through the difference of what is a legislative hearing and what is a quasi judicial hearing. You know, most of the work is quasi judicial, when we start doing things or updating the code, or somebody comes in with with a. Um, a master plan community in the future, those would be legislated because you're hearing it and then making a recommendation to the council, so. I've always liked this particular document because I think it's very informative, it's it's fairly well written. Um, there's a few things that are probably a little out of date, but I think it hits on the. The essentials for knowing how to do your job, and somebody really pushed out to know how to do their job. The definitions and things in there. The second thing we provided, um. Was came from the Oregon chapter of the American Planning Association, and it it's called the Oregon Planning Commissioner Handbook. It's specifically the thought designed for you folks. Um. And I would say that there's a couple of people that go out and do trains around the state, and there haven't been any that have been in the region. In my time here for me to say, hey, here's an opportunity, I think you should go. But if an opportunity comes up, I'll I'll make sure that, you know, the word is out to you for you to attend. Or if there's something that's happening in the region that that where they're doing it as part of a larger meeting or something. Um, because there are some things you can learn, you can listen to me. But you know, if they bring a professional in. You might learn something new or different, or or hear it differently, and sometimes that's important as well.
Yeah, maybe five years ago, D L C E brought on. Program and uh, you can tell.
Yep.
When we went, we went to that, it was. Wasn't necessarily exactly on, um, you know, planning commissioner roles, but it was. Uh, outlining the goal, you know, it's been my plan. But I haven't heard about it since we went to that one.
Yeah, they shifted kind of how they do some of that training, um, again, there hasn't been a regional workshop in this area in a while. Um. But if when that happens, I'll I'll make sure that if there's a planning commissioner option, you guys are aware of it. I think those are really well, well, they're worth your time, yeah, yeah. Um, the next item in there, and this one I know we went through, it's a brochure, it's a. Oh, six, eight pages about the planning goals, the statewide planning goals, the nineteen statewide, which we only have to contribute or follow the first fourteen. And I think we talked about that the night that we handed this out. But again, if you have any questions. One of the things I would share about the goals and and the city's comprehensive plan and development code. Is that you have an acknowledged development code, you have an acknowledged comprehensive plan, and you have an acknowledged development code. That means your development code has been deemed, any comprehensive plan has been deemed to be um, compliant with the goals. So you don't have to apply the goals directly any longer. Um, what you do need to do in a situation of a change to your plan or your development code. Review how it will remain consistent with the goals. But you don't have to review the goals for every application, you can set the goals aside. And say, we've been acknowledged, we're applying our code and our plan directly. Then we provided you guys the actual comprehensive plan. Um. And um, all fourteen goals are there, so I know you don't read that, and you don't like hard now, but I think. Okay. Um. One of the things to think about, um, because we're not gonna get in, well, we're gonna briefly touch on this tonight. Um, but when we get to the next item on the discussion list, the updated planning documents in the discussion. Um, one of the things to think about. And to juggle through is where do you start? Do you start with a comprehensive plan, or do you start with a development code? Where 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 do you start? Your comprehensive plan is your guidance. And development code is how you implement, how you regulate based on that guidance. So if you start changing your development code, and and pretty soon you're not in in not following the guidance in your comprehensive plan, now you got conflict. But if you change your comprehensive plan, and now you're. Do you see where I'm headed? You can find yourself at profit purposes. So to some degree, the answer is you should be doing them kind of like this. You know, you take a step with one and you make the same step with the other one. So just something to keep in mind as you think through that. Um, we did also provide an another D L T, the doc, the L C D document about the goals. Again, so you've got a lot on the goals and the comprehensive plan, but that's the end, that's the last thing I think we provided, so. Um, that's kind of what's in the book, I'm not gonna add any any more for the the next little bit. But we'll start adding to it again, we'll kind of move into a difficult discussion about questions. Some of the things you don't have is the Oregon revised statutes that will be applicable. Um, or the Oregon administrative rules that would be applicable. And that might be more than you want, you know, a lot of those things, I think in an earlier version of a book similar to this, that Barry had put together, he included that statute in the rule. It can be a bit overpowering and a bit, a a little bit of overkill, but. We could go there, some of you are interested in that, so. Questions, thoughts? Okay. All right, so the next thing I have on there was updated the planning documents. Um. So I'll just give you a. The long list of planning documents. And not all of them are on the website, but I'm gonna try to work to fix that. Um, and Jacob has more time. Um. There's the comprehensive plan, which you got. Um, and it's on the website. Um, I've also found the nineteen ninety one comprehensive plan and the nineteen seventy five comprehensive plan. And while they have been replaced. Um, for historical, for hysterical and historical purposes, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put those on the website, just because I think. You know, it's it's a, it is some interesting history to see where the thing started out in nineteen seventy five. Where they got to nineteen ninety one, and now where they are in two thousand and three. And then where where the city's headed is we amend that and update the comments that way forward. Um. Then there's the development code, it's also on the website. Um. I haven't found a good history of things that predate the current one. Um, I haven't done, but I I learned of another drawer that I didn't know about. So I learned about another drawer this week, so. Um, we'll see if we can find some history on that, but it might be easier to just keep the current one out there and not dig into those waters. Um. Then there are the transportation planning documents, so in Wardman, that includes a transportation system plan that was adopted in about two thousand and one. Um, the Main Street interchange area management plan, it was adopted in two thousand and nine, I think. And then there's the quarter long interchange area management plan, which was adopted in two thousand and eleven. And it's going through an amendment currently, we should get the O T C here fairly soon. Okay, thanks, right then, oh, she's gone. Okay, so we lost right then. Um. So there's the the T S P and then the two interchange area management plans, and that kind of, that kind of concludes your transportation planning documents. There's actually a downtown plan that was adopted in about two thousand and one. Um. If you look at it and you look at how this area right here, this this development and kind of this area here. We or what will be Oregon Trail and. Wilson. If that downtown plan is kind of reflective of how this happened, or this this did, um. Connects to that, there there's a connection between how this developed, this roundabout out here, and so a concept that's in that downtown development plan. So as we work with developers on the property on the other side of Maine, that that downtown concept plan will. Will become a part of the conversation. Um, it's not on the website, it's on the list of things to get put on the website. O dot actually was able to provide me with an online version of that from when it was adopted back in oh one. I think it was oh one. So there's those documents, let's see, what have I missed? Um. Oh, well. One that is actually a county document that the county, that the city have had participates with, is a document called the Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan. Um, the first one for the county was adopted in oh six, the update was adopted in sixteen. And now the county's working on updates of that that will be adopted in twenty twenty three. And it, it can and should in the future, when you get to updating your comprehensive plan. In fact, when the county actually. And the five cities adopt the update to the natural hazard mitigation plan sometime in the fall of twenty twenty three. The city should take an action to, once the council adopts that plan as a regu- as a non regulatory guidance plan. The planning commission should initiate a process by which you amend goal seven. And remove your current goal seven and replace it with a pretty simple paragraph or two that says. Our natural hazards goals are addressed in the uh, city co-adopted. Uh, moral county multi-territorial natural hazard mitigation plan. And let that be your guidance for how you do um, natural hazards work in the city. Um. There needs to be enough in that plan so that you can have policy to derive any regulation you may need. At this point in time, what I would say, based on what I've learned about working, and what I know, cuz I worked on their two previous countywide plans. Is that there's. There's not a lot of hazards to deal with here that even are drawn through language plan. We don't have flood plans to be done in a little bit, uh, we have to manage that flood thing or a mess. Um, which we already have a need to update, so there's just not a lot there. I can't think of any other plans right now, there's the ones that jumped out at me, but as a, you know, it's a pretty long list. So when you talk about updated planning documents in discussion. I also know, and I probably should have brought it and provided, but I know that you had some discussions with Barry and and Karen previously. And had some lists of things that you wanted to kind of start with. Um. Should we pull that list out and start from there, or? Do you wanna kind of start again or what?
I remember I, I think we have like a joint meeting workshop between the planning commission and the city council. In here one afternoon. And we kind of built up this, but I don't know if it's even applicable, I don't think, if I remember right, the meeting wasn't really. It's more of an introductory meeting about future workshops, and it wasn't all that, um. I I don't think we progressed very far, I guess. But I I remember sitting there with several city council, I think there was three city councillors with us, and not that many.
Okay. So you have a marksman timeline?
I go back to emails, archives, when I was.
Okay.
Yeah. Kind of think of the city councillors that were that were there, I think, I think David Jones was there.
So that goes back to several years, yeah, right, who do you think was there?
David Jones was with there. Oh, okay, and then we had a. I I don't remember. I keep thinking Leslie, but Leslie hasn't been on there in very long, so I. I I I don't remember very well, so it was.
Well, and. You know, there's a, there's some new council members, there's one council members from January. Um, maybe the best thing is to just kind of just start again. Um, I know Barry had some technical items that he had identified. Barry and I think differently, I mean, you know, he he thought in in kind of technical things that I think more in process, I mean, it's just. It's just where we both, you know, we're our backgrounds and how we how we think. You know, I I know that on the technical side. Um, I've been having conversations, not a lot, but it's come up a couple of times. That there are height limitations in our development code. Based on what the fire department used to be able to do, now they got a big, beautiful, right, new ladder truck. And we should be looking at allowing. All our structures, now that doesn't mean we should just say, well, we'll do seven stories structures, I mean, as, you know, design and inform the community. Seven stories might be out of line. But are four stories okay? I mean, so and and where do we allow four stories, and how do we do that? Um, so that's something that I, you know, it's kind of in my, on my mental checklist of things, you know. Um, height of the buildings, um.
Is that when you allow a conditional use then? You know, when you were talking earlier about that you come in with a recommendation and somebody else says, well. And then they go ahead and say, well, you know, I think that you're right, but I think we ought to allow. Those guys made a good point that they want four stories. And so is that called an additional use? And then you approve it and off you go.
So in this, for building height, um, the current code would allow thirty five feet. And somebody wants to build a structure that would be taller than that by a story. And here's the problem, that if I'm guiding the process for my office as a planning official. I would say to the applicant, you bring to me a letter from the fire department that says they can accommodate that house. And then we're gonna also know from the building officials that once you get above a certain number of stories, you have to put an elevator in. So you're gonna have to show your design, you're gonna meet a fire safety requirements. Then when it comes here, before it would come here, the current code, so if we don't change the code. Let's say they came in tomorrow and wanted to do this, I would say, great, you're gonna apply for your. For your development permit to allow what you're doing. And maybe it's an activity in a commercial zone that I don't, I need to put notice out, wouldn't necessarily come in front of the planning commission. But because they now want a variance to the height. That may trigger a hearing in front of the planning commission for the variance for the height. Right, not for the actual use, but to change the height, so at that point in time, the hearing would be for. The variance for them to have fourth floor structure, or maybe they could only be allowed a three story structure. So for now, to give that would be a variance, in the future. Um, if if we change the code, then the fourth floor structure would just maybe be allowable.
I I think it's funny that you bring that example up, because we recently. I think it was before Barry was gone, had it based on the height restriction in. In Wardman.
I know height was on this list of things to 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 amend.
Session, well, not everybody else were in the session. He asked, uh, basically, we're giving feedback. On how we should probably change that code. And then we had a long, in-depth, quite, twenty or thirty good conversation on just that. On that code, and I think the determination, if I remember right, was. We're okay going up to, I I think it was like thirty eight feet or whatever it was. But it's okay having an extra level of scrutiny on even higher than that, right? But it's okay having an extra level of scrutiny on even higher than that, right, and. I forget where that was, but it was.
It was, um, the hotel, I said, due to height variance over here, one over by, um.
Yeah. And then follow, we, we made a decision, and then a follow-up conversation was we explored how to approach that code, and so that was documented, it was in one of the meetings. And discussed, and I don't know whether how to do that, documentation, or if it was.
We also have a variance on the length of the parking complexes in Castle Rock and Murphy within. Well, maybe we had to get variances for that, or, so we talked about maybe changing that part of the code to building the apartment.
Right.
I think we were just seeing a couple of different variances coming for the planning commission, and said, why don't we change our codes and make it a few different variances every time?
Well, you know, what, what, if you see a variance once. But by the time you see the variance three times, you're probably going, okay, if our code is out of date, or there's something happening in the development community that. If they're doing things differently and we're not accommodating that, so.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, once it's, you probably go, oh, it's a, it's a one-off, but by the time you see something very, very similar more than three times, then you probably are. Need to have that conversation, that's all.
Same time as the, the fire chief was, the county governor signed, didn't it? Uh, when we were having that special rebuild date.
We, I haven't been in a, in any building height discussion. I just know that we're in the community.
I remember discussing all the, you know, your debating, uh, we had, look at. If I remember right, the, at the time the fire chief was here, what, what do you think, you know?
Right, well, and again, I, you know, from where I sit, I'm not gonna even entertain that if I don't have something from fire chief. Or the fire marshal, you know, whether it be the chief or Marty, one of them's gonna need to provide some evidence. That says that they can, they can accommodate what is being proposed by the applicant, if, if they can't get the fire department on board with. Fire response, then I don't think we should, we should even spark a conversation here.
I assume.
What was that name?
Build it all.
Oh, okay. So, anyway, I think the updated planning documents is just something that we're just gonna continue to have a conversation, but, um. So think about that, and think about where you can start, what you can start with, and. You know, what's the burning issue for you? I know I have found a number of things in, you know, as I work through the code. And as I looked at, you know, while I did bring it up. Um. You know, I never had any real experience with the municipal code until I started doing, doing what I've been doing the last couple of years working with cities. And I'm surprised how often I'm like. Wonder what the municipal code says, and I go look at it and it's like, ooh. Okay. That modifies how I'm gonna think about this, because there's something in the municipal code that's applicable. So, um, you're, you're not gonna get away from not having some level. Well, the structure to amend the municipal code is a city council action. There may be some things that you all as a body might say, oh, we need to make sure these are all in alignment, or I, somebody, me or somebody in the cities, don't they, we need to make sure these are all in alignment? Um, and then at the other end of that is the public works standards, so we have a set of standards that drive how things are constructed. And we're finding that those don't sync up with our development code or our T S P in some instances, so we will be. Um. Again, it's just another link at the other end, uh, so the municipal code and, and the public works standards are both. Documents that would have, be approved by the city council without necessarily a recommendation from the planning commission. But if we're doing these things collaboratively in conjunction, I don't think it hurts that you've looked at it all and said, oh. You know, this is a formal recommendation for changes to the code or the plan or the T S P. But concurrently, this is an informal recommendation for changes to the municipal code or the public works standards.
Well, the same thing was, and it's came up several times over the years, but in the comprehensive plan, there is. Well, it's kind of a, that was a little. This is what the city should be thinking about, and based on how, you know. Suggestions, you know, the city should be looking at doing this type of howling. And it's, it's so drastically changed since that was implemented. And that's a big one, you know, because some of these developments come along that aren't necessarily. Where the city is now, but it's compliant with the comprehensive plan going back to.
Well, and what I'll tell you is that our code is compliant with current statute and rule. And. But it may be compliant with the comprehensive plan, so we're gonna be hard pressed to change development code around housing and what's allowed there, and not to currently look at the comprehensive plan. Because absolutely, we need to be having that conversation about. You know, it's, it's about types of housing, it's about costs associated with housing, you know, it's the width, it's the width, it's the breadth, and then it's the depth. And we need to be looking at all of that. So, yeah, I, if I would, um. Yeah, read through, I waited for all of you, you got it, you go read through the comprehensive plan. Um, you know, get out of the stack of sticky notes. And, uh, just start making notes and. What are you gonna place to kind of start and? Kind of sit through where we think we are and where we think we wanna go in how we're changing.
Bill's higher, you know, the development code supposed to be, you know, the comprehensive way that's your, if you're playing. The development code is supposed to round out the numbers.
So you think your, your, your comprehensive plan. Is not designed to be regulatory. It is designed to be guidance, and that's where, that's why it has policy statements in it, it's the city policy, we, the city's gotta find certain things, the city. The city's gonna have findings, or, and the comprehensive plan will hand around housing, the city is. The city finds that we need to have, um, a variety of housing times to attract businesses and residents. The city finds that, uh, we need to have an orderly street network that supports, um, lot development of certain size and type. The city finds, and then the city is gonna make policy statements, it is city policy. That subdivisions, um, would have requirements for streets and. Certain things, okay, the, you find some things that affect your community, and then you make some policy statements. And you might have some history, or there might be some other interesting tidbits in there, and where there was a two thousand and nineteen housing analysis. It should probably incorporate the, the thoughts from that housing analysis, although we've blown through the numbers. Um, relative to what they were projecting, we would need in twenty years, we've probably already gotten there or awfully close in the time sent. But nonetheless, we should talk about what that housing analysis showed. Then from that, we go to our development code and say, okay, we have this policy statement that says we're having a variety of housing ties. But we only allow single family bonds. Well, we better figure out how we allow, I, I mean. Some of our decisions here, we obviously allow other things. But I think it also, even if I, when you look at the zoning map, it's been everywhere, the zoning map, you know. When you look at the zoning map, there are places where it's, you've called out. This is where we put multifamily housing. This is where we put manufactured home parks, um. I don't think there's any other housing ones, I don't think there's any other residential ones. But the question would be, and this goes back to the findings and the policy statements in the comprehensive plan. Are you best served by saying manufactured home parks have to go here, if you want a manufactured home park somewhere else, you're gonna have to change the zoning. Before you put the manufactured home park in. Or do you develop a process by which you can approve a manufactured home park anywhere? If they need certain requirements for their manufactured home park, I'm not advocating one or the other. But Boardman's development code is one way to get there, there are other ways to accomplish. The same right of that. So, yeah, it's hierarchical.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well. Without it.
I have nothing further, I don't know what anybody else will do.
Did you get an invitation to the Christmas party?
Yeah.
Okay. December eighth. So, uh, I don't know, if we. I think she asked for an R S V P by Sunday, and I don't know what that date was.
I don't remember that day, sorry, R S V P.
Well, and I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm laying my down paper, and. So anyway. I, I hope you all could come. Huh?
Probably out of town. Oh, come on then. I can't really get back from the night, and I'm sorry. My kids are already spending all my money, they haven't even got there.
What?
Okay, very much, so that's amazing.
And that's your cover. Beer and wine are available to purchase.
So it says, uh, yeah, the older you have, yes, we speak for. By first, look at there. So anyway, you attend.
Did we mention all this before you adjourned?
I can see it, but I didn't notice.